So we really, we will really appreciate that. I know it's been so long since I've worked with you. I was so much sooner. I remember when you and Rick came to town. So, but to show our appreciation, we have this beautiful card. And it says, "To Loretta Lori Roberts, in appreciation for 24 years of service to the city of Ellsworth, May 15, 2000 to May 17, 2024. My heart says of you, seek his face; your face, Lord, I will seek." Psalm 27:8.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. I know you guys will be so happy. Rick's been waiting, how many years?
Yeah.
Is he doing it early?
It's gonna be an exciting meeting. I mean, you know.
Six hours, huh?
Good to see you.
It's my birthday and I'm happy.
One of those Jordan, Tammy, is one of those Jordan? Jordan, their son, their grandson? All right, so now back onto business. So, I will call to order, a special meeting of the Ellsworth City Council being held tonight, Wednesday, April 24, 2024, at 6:00 PM in the chambers. Item two, Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Item number three, Council Order 042400S, request of the Highway Superintendent to allocate $625,000 from the city's DEP Clean Water State Revolving Loan Fund to be used for the design of stormwater improvements for the main Oak Streets areas.
Can you be counsel? So as you're aware, we had a workshop a couple months. Matt Williams, City Planner.
Yeah, can you put your microphone up a little bit too? Cause they want to hear you.
Matt Williams, City Planner.
Adam Nelson, Highway Superintendent.
So, as you were informed in a workshop a couple months ago, maybe it was a month ago, it was a month ago, the city's been going through some exploratory work with our stormwater system, trying to find out where the system is running properly, where it's clogged, where there may be collapses, and you know prioritizing areas where these fixes need to occur to support our system. And Brent gave a very detailed presentation to you on that workshop. And tonight, we're asking the allocate funds from the drinking water revolving funds to start the preliminary designs for Focus Area 1, which was the downtown area, from that project. So the purpose of the funds is again to start preliminary designs and engineering work by Warden and Kern. And Brent Bridges from Warden and Kern is here tonight to give you a little bit more background on that.
Does anybody need the TV turned?
Yeah, if they can. Here.
Brent Bridges, Warden and Kern.
And many of you have seen this at least three times already, so I'll be very quick. But part of the stormwater is, talk about the downtown area. So, we had inspected a lot of the downtown area as far as gone through in Canberra to see what exactly the conditions were as far as sizing and condition for the stormwater system. Listed a lot of defects in a lot of streets that are affected because of the work that may be done in the future on the storm drain system. And so had some recommendations. This is the area of the city that we basically looked at. Everything in purple is the storm drain system. The red outline is the area of our study. We looked at different storm events, up to a 50-year storm event. What came out was that many storm events of a lower frequency still are a real problem in the city as far as flooding and backup. So even two and five, two and five-year storms are really a serious issue. But we studied all of them to see exactly what the backups would be. This is again, overview of the city, everything you see in the dark is when like a 25-year storm events, everything you see in the shading is where things back up and flood. And so we use that as an opportunity to see where we should focus our energy. So we had four different focus areas. The one we're talking about tonight is the downtown Oak Street area, Focus Area 1. But there were four other, three other areas that we also spent some time because of the serious nature of what happens with the stormwater system because not knowing how to flow. So this is again, an aerial and what you see in the pink and the yellow, the yellow is the storm drain system, the pink are the existing pipes that are, and you can see one-foot pipes, 18-inch pipes, two-foot pipes, three-foot pipes, certainly under capacity to be able to handle it. So all the pink is what's currently undersized and in bad condition. When we looked at it, excuse me, went back and said, as we go back and look at it, everything you see in green is where flooding occurs. And so in this one, you can see where we upsized the pipe, three feet, four feet, five feet, and then six foot into the river to be able to get adequate size on it. This is again, we wanted to make sure we're doing this project, that all the roads that are affected by any of the stormwater work is known. So local roads committee certainly has, and as Adam's putting together his budgets over the next few years, making sure it's consistent with where stormwater work might be happening, such that we do appropriate road improvements at the same time. And then, we all boiled that down into a contract that we put in front of you, that talks about everything from survey, geotech, and the driving piece on the first piece is because of the MDOT project that's happening on Oak Street, that's a little bit more of a precedent to be able to get that work done. When DOT gets done Oak Street, they're gonna want you to have something flowing into the stormwater system in Oak Street, and then an ability to get it to the river. And so that's why this is a priority. And so I think that's, and what you have in front of you is that to get everything from survey, geotech, we'll do aerial flights, all of our design work, putting it out in the street and bid it over the next year, so we can be ready for the DOT project.
Does anyone have any questions for Brent?
Can I just say, I've appreciated seeing it three times. There's a learning curve that comes with this, so I'm comfortable with it.
Do we have a motion?
Move to allocate $625,000 from the city's DEP Clean Water State Revolving Loan Fund to be used for the design of stormwater improvements for Main Street and Oak Street area, Focus Area 1.
Should we add something about having Warden and Kern doing the work in the motion somewhere to award the contract to?
Is, I'm sorry, is this a continuation, is this a new contract or a continuation?
Continuation.
Okay. Second. Okay, there we go. Discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
Can I have one more? I promised I'd play a minute. And the one thing, because it's stormwater, and I want to just acknowledge the hard work that Matt and Janet and Charlie have done over the last couple of weeks. We have, as I said at the last couple of sessions, that we're doing the stormwater work and we're going forward, that doesn't mean we're not going to, we're not gonna stop seeking funding. And so what is on the board right now is an earmark application that would end this week, that asked for $3 million of grant money towards this project. And so, we can move forward with the money you have, but that doesn't mean we don't want to stop looking for money. And I just want to say, it's an awful lot of effort to put forward the last couple of weeks. And Matt and Janet have been like amazing to work with as far as doing it. You just couldn't ask for more collaboration and team as far as putting together and getting letters, stuff like that. So it only comes from, you can't get good things without doing the work to get good things. And this was a really, so we're optimistic this would end this week. And so we're optimistic that if this is going through, that was, we'll move that money towards this project to take some of the loan comp on it out. So that's just the ad.
That's the congressionally delegated money.
Yes. Yes. And so we put together the project and asked for $3 million of grant towards it. You have the match, and so it's a really nice opportunity to try to get some of that money. And so, Charlie, right in the fire. Couple weeks on the job, right in the fire. Here you go.
Good work, team.
Yeah. Good work. Thank you.
I would just say, if the public is watching just this video, this budget hearing, tune into last week's city council meeting for this, a similar agenda item where you see most of the presentation explaining the work going into this long-term project.
Agenda item four, Council Order 042401S, request of the Water Superintendent to accept $6 million in drinking water state revolving funds to be put towards the water treatment plant project. Funds are split into $2.1 million in principal forgiveness and $3.9 million in a low interest loan. Reggie.
Reggie Wentz, Water Department Superintendent. So as, as the memo suggests, it's, it is a $6 million grant for the water program. And it is split up between $3,900,000 and $2,100,000. This is all to go towards the new water treatment plant that we've been working on with Warden and Kern. Brent, can, Warden and Kern can touch more on that?
Thank you.
This is my only slide on the water plant. When I was told by Mike Harris, I was completely confusing the last time I came, and so I'm gonna, Mike is not in the audience to critique my performance tonight. But I'm sure I'll be texted as soon as he gets a chance to see it, cause that's Mike. So on the water plant, and so this is kind of the path of the water plant. And so what you see is, what we've estimated at this point in time is $13,837,000 for the, for the estimated project cost. That is where we are, we haven't designed anything, we haven't picked out technology, but that's a number that we place to be able to see what that, the water plant price might be. The second line is what the city received a couple of years ago as a grant from the drinking water program, and what they said is, would like you better positioned to apply for money. So we're gonna give you some, give you some funds, some grant funds, to be able to start the design process, so that when you apply in the next couple of years, you're ahead of everybody else. The, the next two are the, what you received from the drinking water program and what you're voting on tonight, which is the 3.9 and the 2.1. What the drinking program said is, we love your project, we'll fund it, we need to share the wealth, and we need to give you funding in two years. And so we can give you part of it this year, and we'll give you the rest of it next year, but we want to be able to touch some other communities with that money. And so, we're on, we're in, and so if you vote tonight, the 3.9 and the 2.1 is what is the first installment from the drinking water program that they'll give you. What you see is the 7537 is what the drinking water program now feels that you need to finish the work. So the six and the seven. So, balance required. So, what I've done is, so that means it's, if, if the drinking water program were to give you money like they gave you last time, which is a 35% grant and a 65% loan, seems reasonable to assume they would do the same thing. If, if all you are doing is going back for that money, it's the 487 and the two, those are the, those are the, that's what it would come to you in September, to vote again on accepting that money like you are tonight. So the caveat here is that, that's what you need, that 7.5. You did receive the $2 million earmark, so, towards this project. And so when you see the $2 million earmark grant, that comes off that 7.5. So that 7.5 goes to 5.5. So now the drinking water program thinks you need 5.5 million dollars. They'll probably give it to you in 35 and, and 45, excuse me, 35 and 65, same way. So, but they understand that things can change, you can apply for some more money, and you may not need as much as you asked for. You're first in line. You don't have to apply and be put in line. You are already first in line this September for that 7537, or anything less than that. You're in line, you're not competing with people, they're funding you. And so I only say that, and then, I think you're voting on the last item. Should I hold off and talk about the last item?
Yeah, except your numbers don't add up. Five, six, seven.
No, these aren't additive.
Oh, so, so you're saying that the balance required, even though the DEP is saying we're in line for it, we may not be asking for it.
Right.
Okay.
So, this is what they're gonna give you, this is what it would look like. But with this, it comes off of this. If you did this, it would come off of this, and so you're working towards that. So those last two items aren't additive, but they're in play that will allow you to reduce that overall asking. And so that's, so where you're hearing now is the two things you're voting on, are this first installment, the 3.9 and the 2.1, is what you're voting on tonight.
And then the next one, so that you don't have to keep standing up there and coming up, the Northern Border Grant is the next item on the agenda. So, I do have a question. This isn't a public hearing, so we're just saying to the DEP, we're interested in this, we will come back and actually accept the loan in a public hearing and in a regular bond. Okay.
Yes.
So, at this point, we're gonna accept this, but we're not.
Yes.
As I said, this isn't the all-in-one. This isn't saying, hey, water treatment plant, all this money, we're going, this is just to stay in compliance with getting this funding and keeping all these options available.
We received a letter from DEP, who are the drinking water program, asking us to let them know if we're interested by May 1st, so we're looking for authorization.
I just want to make sure that, cause we do a rules, and I just want to make sure that we're following them. And that the public knows we are following the rules, so.
Yep.
Okay. I have a question related to that. So the way it's written, if we make a motion, is to accept and sign for, is that correct? That we should say that? Accept and sign for?
You don't really have to sign. I guess you could authorize Charlie to sign.
Okay.
Just like the same.
And that doesn't require a public hearing?
No, cause we're not, we're not actually accepting the money. We're letting the drinking water program know we're interested in accepting the money.
Your wishes.
Move to approve the Water Department Superintendent to accept and sign, or express our desire to accept and sign for $6 million for the main drinking water state revolving fund in the form of $3.9 million in a low interest loan and $2.1 million in principal forgiveness.
Second. Discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Unanimous. So Council Order number five, no, Council Agenda Item Number Five, Council Order 042402S, request of the Water Superintendent to apply for Northern Borders Regional Council Grant in the amount of $1 million to put towards the water treatment plant project. There is a 50% match required, but that can be covered by the DWSRF loan, so no additional funds will be required.
So again, and this is Brent's bottom number there, it's all for the water treatment plant. If, if you vote on it and approve it tonight, we can use money from the previous award from the drinking water program to cover our match. And then, it's, it would essentially then be free money from that point.
Free money?
Great words.
Do you have any questions?
I'm hearing Steve say, so this is gonna cost Mr. and Mrs. Nothing?
Good that you channel him when he's not.
That would be Mr. and Mrs. Ratepayer.
Yeah, okay.
Good distinction. Good distinction.
All right.
Okay, we need a motion.
Move to approve the Water Department Superintendent to apply for the Northern Borders Grant of $1 million.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Yeah, good work, guys.
Yeah.
I thought you were tied too.
So, we need to adjourn from this meeting so that we can go into the second special meeting.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay.
See, I only need one. I'm good. Not bad, only four minutes behind.
All right. So special meeting, I'm gonna call to order the special meeting of the Ellsworth City Council to be held Wednesday, April 24th at 6:15 PM in Elsa Chambers. I'm going to ask if we can skip Agenda Item Number Two and not pledge, do the Pledge of Allegiance again. All those in favor? Thank you. New business, Item Three, Public Hearing and Action on Council Order 042410, authorizing loans of up to $1,844,341 through the State School Revolving Renovation Fund.
Good evening. As you've been presented, we have the opportunity to receive $1.8 million through the School Revolving Renovation Fund project through the Department of Education. This loan is expected to be forgiven at 50.79%, and then the remainder of the loan is 0% interest over 10 years.
And is, this is going to be used for the technical center?
Yes, this is at Hancock County Technical Center for Life Safety Improvements, which include upgrade or replacement of the elevator, upgrade to our fire alarm system, and installation of a fire suppression system, which we currently do not have.
So I'm gonna read part of the order for you to make a motion from, so that you have an understanding of what this is, is, so everyone can have an understanding of what this is before I open up the public hearing. This is ordered that pursuant to 30 AMRS subsection 5772, the city charter as amended and all other authority thereto, enabling the treasurer and the chair of the city council are hereby authorized in the name of and on behalf of the city to borrow an amount not to exceed $1,844,341, the SRF loan, through the main municipal bond bank's School Revolving Renovation Fund under the main school facilities finance program, of which 50.79%, estimated to be $936,741, is expected to be forgiven, and 49.21%, an estimated $907,600, is expected to be repaid, the proceeds of which are hereby appropriated to fund the costs of the following school renovations and improvements, including cost of issuance, capitalized interest, and any other costs related or ancillary thereto referred to as the project. And it's the Hancock County Technical Center Life Safety Improvements, installation of fire suppression sprinkler system, upgrade to fire alarm system, replacement or major upgrade to the elevator. So, that being said, I'm gonna open up the public hearing. Anyone would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. And what, here's your wish.
Just a question first, all those upgrades, those are necessarily legally necessary upgrades for fire code or?
So, yes and no. So, we are grandfathered in because of when the building was constructed, okay, that we don't have to have that. But I would say every time we are inspected and spoken to, that is something that is always written up as a risk, that because of the technical programming we offer in the school, that we don't have a fire suppression system is obviously not safe. So are we legally required to have it? No, we are grandfathered in, but I would say that it is an absolute necessity for staff and student safety. And where we have the opportunity to have it at 0% and half of it forgiven is the best way to go, to have such a major improvement made to the building.
Move to approve the request of the Ellsworth School Department to borrow $1,884,341 from MMVB's School Revolving Renovation Fund as set forth in Council Order 042410.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you very much.
Okay. Agenda Item Number, oh god, this is long. Agenda Item 042411, the Ellsworth School Budget Resolutions for FY 2025. The following actions taken pursuant to Items 1 through 4 must be taken by a recorded vote. Okay. Order approving state-local EPS funding allocation for public education from pre-kindergarten to grade 12 for Ellsworth schools for FY 25. I need to read these, right? Because it's recorded?
You only have to read the part where it says city council order.
Oh, okay.
They're only for the first four. After that, you can lump them together if you wish.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. City Council Order Number 042411A, order that the city will appropriate for the total cost of funding public education from pre-kindergarten to grade 12, as described in the Essential Programs and Services Funding Act, recommended $7,950,399.34. And to see what sum the municipality will raise as the municipality's contribution to the total cost of funding public education from pre-kindergarten to grade 12 is described in the Essential Programs and Services Funding Act in accordance with the main revised statutes, Title 20A, Section 1568A. The school board recommends $7,950,399.34. Do you need a separate vote for each of these, Tony, or?
For the first four.
For the first four? Okay. Turn of a motion?
Do we need a public hearing on each of those as well?
Nope. Okay. Cause we have. Because they're voting on it.
That's right. Okay. Move to approve Council Order 042411A.
Have a second? Second. Discussion? All those.
Can you explain just why they're broken out like this in this process?
I don't remember. It's always been like this, but I'm not sure.
State statute?
Yeah, it's state statute.
Fair enough.
Yeah, each one has to have a separate resolution.
And these are all, so just to clarify, these are, there isn't a public hearing because these are the resolutions that are gonna be voted on in June.
Correct.
So.
Correct.
The public has the, that's when they make their decision.
And Michelle maybe also mentioned, cause this is going so fast, that we already voted for this?
Oh, the bud, yeah, yeah, for the public. The, the budget was actually approved at our council meeting, but the resolutions need to be put into record separately, which is why we're doing it in a special meeting tonight. Correct.
So just to clarify, we've had the conversations, we've had the questions, we've wrestled, and now it's just moving it forward?
Correct.
Yes.
So we have a second. Okay. Discussion? All those in favor?
Do you have to read something, or should I keep making marks?
I have to read the, the next council order. It's shorter. City Council Order Number 042411B, order that the city will raise and appropriate for the annual payments on debt service previously approved by the legislative body for non-state-funded school construction projects or non-state-funded portions of school construction projects, in addition to the funds appropriated as the local share of the school administrative units' contribution to the total cost of funding public education from pre-kindergarten to grade 12. The school board recommends $82,345.63.
Move to approve Council Order 042411B.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor? Okay. City Council Order Number 042411C, order that the city of Ellsworth raise and appropriate $6,211,261.52 in additional local funds which exceeds the state's essential programs and services allocation modeled by $6,211,261.52 as required to fund the budget recommended by the school board. The school board recommends $6,211,261.52 for additional local funds and gives the following reasons for exceeding the state's essential programs and services funding model by $6,211,261.52. This amount is needed to cover the school department's expenses that are not recognized or fully funded by the state's funding model, facilities, maintenance costs, special education costs, technology costs, transportation costs, professional development costs, and system administration costs.
Move to approve Council Order 042411C.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay. I'm just reading this note. Council Order Number 042411D, order that the, the city of Ellsworth will authorize the school board to expend for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2024, and ending June 30th, 2025, from the school administrative unit's contribution to the from the school administrative unit's contribution to the total cost of funding public education from pre-kindergarten to grade 12, as described in the Essential Programs and Services Funding Act, non-state funded school construction projects, additional local funds for school purposes under the main revised statutes Title 20A, Section 15690, unexpendable balances, tuition receipts, state subsidy, and other receipts for the support of schools. Recommended amount is $29,729,280.28.
Move to approve council order 042411D.
Second? Second. Thank you. Discussion? All in favor?
So you could choose to read the rest of those orders together and vote as one on the rest of the one.
Okay, so E, F, G, and H?
Yes.
Okay. City Council Order number 042411E, order that the city of Ellsworth appropriate $288,250.31 for adult education and raise $288,250.31 as the local share, with authorization to expend any additional incidental or miscellaneous receipts in the interest and for the well-being of adult education programs. City Council Order 042411F, order that the city authorizes that the sum of $132,323.74 is hereby raised for all other expenditures, the food service program, for fiscal year 2024-2025, and that the Ellsworth School Department is authorized to expend any unexpendable balances and additional incidental or miscellaneous receipts in the interest and for the well-being of the food service program. City Council Order 042411G, order that in addition to amounts approved for the fiscal year 2024-25, school operating budget, the school board be hereby authorized to expend such other sums as may be received from federal estate grants or programs or other sources during the fiscal year for school purposes, provided that such grants, programs, or other sources do not require the expenditure of other funds not appropriated for the school operating budget. City Council Order 042411H, order that the city authorize the school board to appropriate funds from the ending balance of the school general operating funds for fiscal year 2023-24 to establish a reserve for unanticipated facilities and maintenance costs and authorize the school board to expend those funds. Recommended $100,000.
Move to approve council orders 042411E, 042411F, 042411G, and 042411H.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Item number five, adjournment?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Wonderful. Thank you.
Good to go.
Well done.
So we've got one more.
That's good.
After all that work.
Yeah.
Thing I can read.
I would also. Thank the staff. They did a lot of kind of memo work and prep work and Tammy and Michelle.
We're going to take just a couple minute break before we go into the budget. I just need to go get a possible.
Yeah.
I'm definitely in favor of moving forward, but I do have some concerns about the highway department and their garage. And are they having exhaust issues as well? I'm assuming they do too, so this is something that we want to look at for our highway department as well, because they do run vehicles in there in the winter time.
Yeah, I think that was brought up before too.
Yeah.
Can I ask Adam?
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me. I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops. And
Yeah. I'm going to ask Adam.
Yeah, that all sounds good to me.
For the MagnaGrip. The pricing has gone up, yes, that is the most current pricing. Pricing has gone up to seventy-six thousand one hundred and thirty. So that's where we're at now, they're willing to honor that through July one. So that's where we're at, we are with that. So this is, this is again primarily based on your recommendations. My recommendation is to do it out of ARPA, and therefore we're not trying to pull it out of taxes and all that stuff, we'd still recommend taking it out of ARPA funds and going that route for it.
Will ARPA cover that?
It will, yeah.
What do we have left in ARPA funds?
It's about four seventy, which is in there, and I think we had a previous top line discussion, Nate can verify, that might be in your...
I thought it was three ninety-three, something like that.
It's like closer to four.
So if we appropriated ARPA funds, we'd still have over three hundred thousand remaining in ARPA. And when does that need to be spent by?
December of twenty-four it has to be allocated.
Okay. So this is the, this is the year port.
Okay, and do we have other projects we're targeting ARPA for?
It's considered in the budget packet.
I did.
You know, I think, as I mentioned in last council meeting, you know, it seems like the general inclination here is that this is sort of the fire department's year for, you know, this type of thing. And we can, you know, that this is last year, the new station, police, and this year, we're gonna kind of make our big investment in fire, so that's kind of the piece of...
And I, are we tonight gonna be talking about what, because we had asked about the ARPA funds, how much we received, what we spent it on, what was left, so then we could have a discussion of what was remaining?
I think we had that last week.
Yeah.
That manila folder?
Yeah, that was, we gave the top line numbers. I overstated by a hundred thousand, but that, that is the number, yeah.
So is that a separate discussion tonight, or are we doing that next?
You know, as a, the final budgeting piece on kind of what you want to tag for ARPA, we could have in there, you know, at the same time, I know ARPA doesn't have to necessarily be a part of the budget piece. If we want to move forward and just say, we want to go with this now, we can start looking into at least this piece and separate those two. If we want to, you know, as a council decide to move forward with the exhaust system, which I think people need, it's within the ARPA funding, as opposed to waiting to the June twentieth date, you know, we could potentially look to move this forward. We might need to do, I didn't, I looked to you and Tammy, Michelle, if we wanted to decide to kind of consider that and to move forward in this piece, knowing it's either gonna be ARPA or, you know, general fund, that we could try to just get this going so that we don't hit that July first deadline on the price, lock in the price, and, you know, we will be pulling back seventy-six K from our ARPA, but it seems like this is something the council and folks want to do. So I could look to kind of fast track this one if we want to go to.
I mean, we're outside of council meetings, so we really can't vote on anything.
We'd have to re-present this again in May.
Yep, that's, I guess that's what I'm saying, is, you know.
Do we want to tee it up?
Do we want to tee this piece up as kind of our next council meeting in May on this, or even if we have to have a special at some point?
I, I mean, I, I would feel comfortable teeing this up, this seems really important in general about ARPA funds. We've really never had, at least in my time on the city council, any like, here's the ARPA funds, what are some things we could use them for, what are the, they've, they've all come as like, hey, should we do this? Okay. Hey, should we do this? Okay, rather than kind of a global thing.
Yeah, maybe...
So I would say that, but I also think this is really important, so we keep saying every time, so hey, we should do this.
We did have an ARPA here before you all came on, the last cycle, just after we got awarded ARPA, we did have a general education of what ARPA could be used for and how it was authorized.
Yes, I was there, actually, I was there for that.
Right, and they did, they did a presentation for us.
That was great, but we never had a conversation about kind of our priorities.
To your point, Michelle, I think what I'm kind of hearing here, maybe I look towards teeing this up, this seems like, hey, this is what we want to do, it's gonna be with the ARPA, but then also of our remaining SIP projects, of our remaining, like, what is ARPA eligible? What is, and then what could be the, the full suite of those that, just as part of this budget cycle, that that's kind of in there. And maybe that's even in some ways like highlighting as we build the new binders with what we're on, like, these would be the green light with ARPA.
I think that, I think, I, I don't even, I mean, I really am not comfortable even designating it, I, I think we should tee it up because we know that it needs to be done this year, it's been put off for several years, and it's important to, to get this done. But I, I'm not, we've got till July first, so I'm not, I'm not comfortable saying, we'll do this with ARPA, let's tee this up, we'll do it with ARPA, and then putting it in the budget, I think it needs to be really a discussion of all of the capital improvement plans, on everything that we're, that the fire department wants and everyone else wants, this is how we're going to fund it. Because it can be ARPA funds, there can be a borrowing, there can be, you know, part of the budget, there are so many different ways that we can fund these projects, and we still haven't heard about really from local roads or the police department or the others. I think it would be good to get a, I would personally like to have a picture of what the capital improvement plan is, and what, how much we're being asked for it, and, you know, and honestly, the rest of the budget, because...
I mean, start pulling those pieces out too, from how to fund it from ARPA.
I think the department, the department as a whole, from the downstairs, and especially after the NIOSH report, they want to know that there's a commitment where they, where we're gonna do this, and it's not gonna be another twelve months like it was this past time.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm kind of looking at that NIOSH, I get that, and I'm, if it's a month earlier that we voted this, we get it, and it's a month that we have cleaner air, and, which is why I, you know, and I want to get all those other things in there, and I want to get it, but this one...
It is one of the more time sensitive ones.
Yeah, we missed, we already spent more money because we didn't decide this last fall to get this done, and we could have spent ARPA on it then.
How long does it take to get this installed once you say, yes, let's go?
It's gonna take, I, it's gonna be about three months before they can come through the door.
I think we have two budget review workshops in between now and the next council meeting, so if we just make one of those general budget review workshops.
That would be really great, yeah.
Cover that information, you could still tee it up for the May.
I think that would be a great idea, tee it up for the May meeting, we can't vote on it tonight.
Right, right.
You can't, you can't...
That wasn't, that, again, that wasn't my intent in the first place, again, it was being presented as CIP, you all moving forward with it early is absolutely great, and I think it goes a long way with the department as a whole, with the commitment from the council, so...
That shot in the dark AFG, I think it was, Grant, when would you hear back from that?
We won't, we won't, this year.
Did it get applied for last year when we sent it to?
It's imaginary.
I sent it to your deputy.
No, so the grant that you forwarded to us, while it is for that, it was only for five thousand dollars with a fifty percent match.
Oh, why would they even give that?
Yeah, so, because it was geared more towards, like, our surrounding communities, it was geared more towards them.
Oh, I gotcha.
So, obviously for us, and then moving forward from there, but the AFG, last year when the AFG came around, by the time it came up for us to be able to get it into a council session to get approved to apply for the grant, that grant process had already closed. So it fell in the middle of a, of a grant, of a council cycle, that's why I was so adamant to get in this year early.
So I, I, like I said, I, I mean, anecdotally, I can say, you know, I'm all in favor of making sure that this gets through this year, but we can't vote on it, and we can't, we can't, we can't really tee you up until we get an official vote, really, but just...
So, sorry, a comment, and then I guess a question, it's life safety, I would consider it urgent as we're moving forward, I mean, setting the intention that it get taken care of this year.
Correct.
In the way that makes most sense as we're fitting it in with the rest of the budget.
Right.
As remembering the other conversations we've had about the work that needs to be done downstairs. A question for you, though, is to get an accurate number when it is time, the letter from February says not to exceed seventy-five thousand, but there are higher numbers back here, so just clarity on that.
So that, that original memo?
Right.
That is original memo from a presentation that was done before, that memo's not applicable with my CIP, so that was part of the original packet when this was all started.
Make sure that we've got the right number when it comes to time.
Yes, and that, and that's why I gave you what I gave you today, because my presentation today was not for a council approval on anything, today was for a CIP, which is why I gave you the updated quote. If we're gonna go in May, I'll give you a proper breakdown of everything the way I'm supposed to.
Tammy?
Clarity, just...
I'm definitely in favor of moving forward, but I do have some concerns about the highway department and their garage, and are they having exhaust issues as well, I'm assuming they do too, so this is something that we want to look at for our highway department as well, because they do run vehicles in there in the winter time.
Yeah, I think that was brought up before too.
Yeah.
Can I ask, Adam?
Yeah, that all sounds good to me, I like the idea of, if it's possible, working on it in the next two budget workshops, and if we can, as the council feel comfortable that in May, we could vote to designate this because of the, the life safety aspect, I think we should work towards that, but obviously we need to, we'll see, but that sounds good to me.
Next?
Yeah, yes, next.
Okay, the next one is also an ARPA request, but this is for the ambulance, this is so that we can purchase the equipment to upgrade us from our current permission, which is advanced DMT, and permit us up to paramedic. So we have one, one of our advanced DMTs currently is in paramedic school, he'll, he'll finish up in December, we have a paramedic that is downstairs currently on the floor, and then both your, both of your chief officers are paramedics. However, in our current permission status with, with the state of Maine, we're only allowed to operate at the advanced DMT level, which means we can't get any of the advanced level medications, we can't do advanced level airways or things like that. And being able to purchase this equipment allows us to permit up to the paramedic level and give Ellsworth Fire the capability to provide the highest level of care, which is what you all want for the city of Ellsworth. So that request, that request was for thirty thousand dollars for the additional equipment that we would need. And that one I did request to come out of ARPA because it is specifically designated in the ARPA plans that it be geared towards the EMS response.
I have no idea why, I didn't get the fire department stuff.
It's in there, it was just in that manila.
Oh, here it is. Thank you, holy cow. Okay, so that's the, that's the thirty thousand that you're...
Correct.
So confused.
It's just these two pages are here too.
Yeah, there's only two pages on that one.
I don't think it's the...
Okay.
It's just an theon combo to telescopic ram.
So... Keep going.
All right, I'm, I'm waiting on you.
Yeah.
It's talking about hydraulic extraction tools?
Yes, so basically, everybody's familiar jaws...
Sorry, I just wanted to say that.
Extraction. We use it for teeth pulling.
Geez, never mind.
Okay, so basically what it is, is the jaws of life that you all are familiar with, the equipment that's downstairs is twenty-five years old. Last year I had proposed putting it through, I was advised to only pick one of two projects, and so we funded the airbags last year, which was originally supposed to be a CIP proposal, and it eventually got the funds out of a bond for the rescue, the heavy rescue, got paid out of there. So we didn't use any CIP last year to purchase equipment. This is twenty-five years old, it's been broken multiple times this year, we've had to send it out, we've had to have loaners here in place, it's time to start replacing some of our antiquated equipment, and this is why I'm asking you to go with this. This is a battery operated system, which means we no longer have to use hydraulic hoses that are under pressure, it's safer for the firefighters, it's safer for the people that we're trying to remove from the vehicles. So that is my proposal for this year, for that.
Just a note, Castine has the system, I've talked to the fire department folks over there, and it's not just a new one, it's like better, to really help them get into these things quicker. It's kind of like, you know, all those battery, like, they're just doing such great stuff with battery operated thing, it's a very new technology, really can help save people's lives too.
How often would you say the tool is used these days?
I don't know, I don't spend enough time on the floor. I mean, it varies, summer season's coming, so it could...
Someone probably picks up.
Yeah.
Like one, so a week, or?
Something as simple as a door spreader using to pop the door, use somebody else, or you miss potentially.
It wasn't but a month ago, we had to use it on, on a incident out on High Street in front of Shimbashi, so...
Yeah, so it's multiple times in a year that you're using it?
Yeah, absolutely. It pays for itself the first time we get somebody out of a vehicle. Two winters ago, we were over the embankment out on Bangor Road with a dump truck, trying to get somebody out of it, so... So that's my request for the hydraulic tools, is to replace what we've got, upgrade what we've got, and get into something safer for everybody. So the last one goes with this conversation that you all had with Jim last week, and that had to go with the KUSMALL, I know Steve's not here, but the KUSMALL air system that's on the trucks. You know, we were talking about the electricity and the fact that when those kick on, they draw a lot of power from the electrical system. In addition to redoing all the electrical drops for all the, for all the trucks, we're also looking to exactly what Steve was recommending, recommending in a different fashion. We already have an air compressor downstairs, we want to extend branch lines and drop hoses down between each truck and be able to plug in each truck with airlines, as opposed to relying on a electrical component to charge our air systems. That would leave the trucks constantly at charge, when they, when they go to pull out, it would auto disconnect, just like it does now. However, the continuous electrical draw on the, on the electrical system downstairs, and the repeated replacement that we have to do with pumps that are constantly running all the time with the pressures, we keep spending twelve hundred dollars every time we have to replace a, a pump on a truck. So we're looking at longevity, no matter what truck we bring in outside of these, they would be able to plug right into this system, we, we wouldn't have to retrofit beyond what we're already gonna do.
So do we still need to upgrade all of the electrical system down there to do this?
We do, we do, because of the way the trucks, the trucks are different than they were twenty-five years ago.
Yeah.
The electrical system downstairs was not made for the trucks that we have now.
Okay.
So the, the draw is always gonna get more and more, we bring in newer trucks, the draw's gonna get higher.
The, that makes sense to me, I have a question, you also, we have something about a boiler room fitting pipe project?
I think that goes with the airline.
That goes with the airline?
It leaves the air compressors in the back.
Okay, so that's affiliated, okay.
They would have to run all the way to the forward base.
Okay, all right, excellent.
So that's all I have for FY twenty-five.
That's it?
Did it, well...
Is this, Scott, is this a, an example of a bill, what it is?
Is that the one from Autotronics?
Yeah, fourteen hundred dollars.
My deputy had that put in there, that's something that I can deal with inside my own, my own fiscal budget, as opposed to running it through here.
Okay.
So that was in a packet that I didn't send out.
Okay, so this is not part of this?
Yeah, it's not part of it, what you have for the quote for the, for the full airline system, that's for upgrading the trucks to accept it. So the only other discussion, and Nancy brought this up during my budget thing, was the discussion about trucks. We're not asking for a truck this year, so that's, that's off the table. However, we want, you all to understand that we want to start the discussion, we've got trucks that are falling apart. I've got, the newest engine downstairs was bought in two thousand six, uh, two thousand sixteen, it's cost over twenty thousand dollars this year. It is the most expensive truck right now for repairs, and it's the youngest truck. I've got a twenty-seven-year-old truck downstairs, I've got a twenty-year-old truck that we're using as a reserve, you know, I tried to help out the city with buying a twelve-year-old truck, which is, it's keeping up, but it still has costs that come associated with it. At one point last year, both our frontline engines were down, we had a spare engine in the station along with the ladder truck, and that's all we had to operate with. I got four guys on a truck and two seats, so what we're asking is that we start a discussion and start looking at plans to start a apparatus replacement, working in towards FY twenty-six, because it needs to be done. We can't be in emergency replacement anymore, it's got, we've got to get a schedule set.
Just to add to that too, it also takes like a year, when you order it, then, or maybe not a year.
If, if we, right now, the manufacturer are telling us anywhere's from twenty-four months to thirty-six months to buy a truck. So if we start talking about it now, we make a commitment in FY twenty-six, you're still talking twenty-nine before we see the truck come through the door, because the chassis are taking upwards of a year to get. So there are some options out there, we've been approached several times with some tank trucks to replace the twenty-five-year-old, twenty-seven-year-old truck downstairs, it's gonna cost us between five and six hundred thousand dollars to replace that truck, fitted to fit in this station, because we have such a problem with how we fit stuff in the station. And it's still gonna be five to six hundred thousand dollars, and anywhere's from twelve to twenty-four months.
Just in the past, how have, how's the city gone about funding trucks, you know, half a million dollar truck, is that through debt, or typically?
Well, Ms., Council Bill can explain, I, we've typically bought them outright, I think you bonded the last one.
We did bond the last one.
Yeah, and I know the heavy rescue that I bought a couple of years ago came out of bond money that was earmarked specifically for the heavy rescue and for the ambulance.
It's part of our debt service still paying for these, some of these trucks?
I think the bond is almost done, isn't it?
Where is it, two thousand sixteen is the...
That was the three million dollar bond.
Yeah, I should be getting pretty close to it.
Yeah, twenty-six if the...
I know we had to close it out, that was part of the, the purchasing, all the rest of the equipment, we had to close it out.
I can't remember how we, that was in two thousand sixteen, so I wasn't here, but sometimes we would...
Was that a five-year?
Sometimes we would borrow in stages though, so like, if the truck was part of it, it would be for five years, and then, so I don't know.
And you all have the...
But I don't, I don't have, personally have that breakdown, so I don't know where we are with that, so I know that when Chief Tupper bought it, you know, I see the notes on when they bought it and everything through the purchase program that they went through, but beyond that, I, I didn't see where he allocated the funds from.
I think you have from a previous packet or a previous sheet on the bond schedule and the, kind of the fallout dates.
I missed an email.
You can see kind of where we're at.
Yeah, I missed an email. We did, but it was a, it was like, you have to scroll back.
I know that bond that went out had several different projects on it outside of the fire department, there was several things that were tied into that.
And what I, what I don't know is if, because like, we used to stage them, so we didn't take the whole bond, do twenty, we'd, like, if part of it was a fire truck and it was only, we didn't want to continue to be paying on a fire truck that, you know, or should have been paid off in five years or something, so we would stage the bond, so the principal would change over the twenty years. So I don't know if we did it with that one or not, but I can't...
So that's what we would like to do, I'd like to start working with my guys on the floor and my captain, start developing a plan for replacing these trucks over a period of time. That ladder truck downstairs, it's thirteen years old now, it's supposed to come out of service at the twenty-year mark, it's taken three years to get a ladder truck, and it's two million dollars for that ladder truck. So we, we really got to start planning now in the next couple of years, how long it's gonna take us to get trucks, and how we're gonna do it.
So if, if you do that, would you be, you know, making a plan on how you're going to, to replace it, getting on to a replacement plan, but will you also have a committee that'll start looking at what you want to design for a truck now, and...
Yeah, we're gonna start that whole process, between how we're gonna, how we want to look at funding it, the type of trucks that we want, you know, how we're gonna build them, what type of programs are out there for us, is it gonna limit what we spec into these trucks, or are we gonna be able to have a full customization, things like that?
Yeah.
Again, we could pay a lot of money for a lot of stuff out of truck, or we could pay, you know, what we need, but the biggest thing is, is we want to work towards getting what's gonna work for the guys downstairs.
Because I will say that, I've, I've been through the process a few times, and I've always been really proud of the department, because I know the, I think it was the ladder truck that we got, there was another town that got a big grant, so they bought a really big truck, and then they couldn't use it in half the town, because the roads are too small for the truck. So we never had that, I mean, we've, we've always, the fire department has always been what's best for the, the city and their, you know, not the biggest, baddest truck with the best equipment and stuff on it, so... Yeah, it's, yeah, so...
We try, and I know they, they try really hard.
That, we couldn't fit the big truck downstairs anyways.
Pardon me?
That, we couldn't fit the big truck downstairs anyways.
Well, we fit about as big a truck we could squeeze in there as we could, so...
So that bond expires or matures in two thousand twenty-eight?
Two thousand twenty-eight? So it's a twelve-year bond?
It looks like it didn't close until two thousand nineteen, it looks like it was banned for a while, that's the one that we turned into permanent financing in two thousand nineteen.
Oh, okay.
So that would, I guess, the time when we're talking about...
Sounds like you have the time of delivery.
Yeah, so...
Be retired, finished with that payment, so that's good.
So that's where I'm at with that, I just want to let you know that that's what we would like to do for this fiscal year, is get a, get a plan in place on how we want to do this, what we can, what we can do, what we need. But our fleet is aging, and it's, it's gotta be replaced, and if I can do multiple trucks at the same time and keep the cost down, that would be the best way to go, but, you know, we'll, we'll do, we'll give you our recommendations and take your guidance. And that's all I got.
I just want to say, my son loves the fire department, he always, and you guys are so great, I think he probably comes like four times a year to like check it out, and someone's always there that lets him on it, and so I just appreciate that, it's really another reason I like having you guys right here as you're in town, and, you know, he's a big fan, so thank you very much.
We appreciate it, thank you.
You know, if they could get the slide on the playground.
Don't talk to him about that.
She's gonna have a poor ear down.
I'm sure they can make it happen.
All right.
Yeah, they got this, they got that.
What?
You need me to stay from all support?
He just took all your money.
Sorry.
Yeah, yeah, he's on there. So we just kind of want to see if it's all right, so what we're gonna do, our budget plus capital, and we have one of our capital items is the body camera proposal, and we have a representative from WatchGuard that's gonna zoom in here, answer some questions, give us some background.
Okay.
So if we could start with the capital first and go to the budget, is that all right?
Sure, it's all right with everyone, isn't it?
Yeah. Do you want to introduce yourselves?
Yeah, Troy Beers, interim police chief.
Sean Willie, captain.
So what we're gonna talk about first is Chris Drake's gonna be on here from Motorola, and they're the ones that provide the camera services.
We currently have in eleven of our vehicles, and what we're looking to do for this capital improvement is eleven of our cameras, there's only a couple still under warranty, they don't make, or they're phasing out the four RE version that we currently have. So they're phasing out, phasing out the, the ones we have, we currently do not have body cameras, this is a package deal, so that we're all on the same vendor, it's currently what the majority of the county uses, so we're on the same platform supplying videos to the DA's office. It is going to be a cloud-based service, Jason will be able to speak about that a little bit right now. Currently, our service that holds our videos is not supported anymore, it's outdated, and Chris will talk about that when he comes on here. Couple reasons, we did propose this last year, but it was cut by the manager, so it didn't make it to you folks, so this is the second time that we're bringing this forward. Some things with the body cameras is to be transparent to the public, can help in civil litigation, for instance, the officer involved shooting we recently had would have been a great time to be able to have body cameras. We did have our cruiser cameras going, so there is audio of it, but there's actually no video of the incident itself. It would also help in criminal cases, court proceedings, and internal investigations when citizens make complaints against officers, some of those investigations can take substantial amount of time with interviews and things like that, when potentially a body camera would put, put it to rest fairly quickly. So those are just some reasons we're looking to do this and move this forward, also, it was a recommendation, it was part of our Emily accreditation, that we move forward with the purchase of body cameras.
Is he on there?
Yeah, I'm here, can you hear me?
We can hear you, we just can't see you.
Okay, sorry, hold on a second.
So the, we can, hey, Chris?
Can you see me now?
Yeah. So we can, the purchase, the purchase of these is over a five-year period, it's not a lease, he's gonna get into the details of the purchase and why it makes sense to be able to do this. How about it, Chris?
Hey, all right, thanks for having me. I'm Chris Drake, I'm the manager for all the WatchGuard up there in Maine. So, we sent a proposal to LSR PD and also to the Sheriff's Department as well for a Emmer in-car video package, like he said, to upgrade to the cloud service. That service includes eleven of those of the in-car system with the body on camera, onsite deployment, configuration, project management, installation of all the systems into your existing CAD system through Spillman. Also includes unlimited storage and data for both systems. It also refreshes of the body on cameras every three years, so during year three, you will send back your body, all your body on cameras that you will get as well, and five year warranties for all of the, all of the systems. It also includes two interview room systems, which will ingest lead into the cloud storage and LPR service for all the, all the cruisers as well. Included at, on here, the ability to live stream and have location of the in-car and the body on cameras as well through our Command Central wear platform, and that was at no cost. We actually gave that to you guys for free and there's a incentive trade-in as well for thirty-five thousand dollars off the upfront cost. So, this is the behind the urgency on trying to get everything moved over to the new platform. One, like, like it was said previously, this has not been supported by last year, which means there's been no security updates and there's really no support on it. We can't guarantee that there will be any support on your server and the parts for the in-car systems are coming far and few between. I think most of the parts that we're shipping out to Chris are refurbished and it, the four R E is gonna be end of life very soon. It's been in service for over ten years. Supply chain's running low on parts to replace and repair these, so to avoid putting your agencies in a bad spot, it's, I get you guys to look into moving over to the new platform because we can ship you all the equipment, but it takes a couple of months for you guys to get up and running and the, the new platform will only support the new equipment, okay? We can't take the new equipment and put it on the old platform, it doesn't work backwards. So, yeah, so your new, your existing server runs on evidence library four, so any new installations, reinstalls, system rebuilds or any of that are not supported either, so we're, we cannot build on to your existing platform as well. And as far as the CDS grant, did you want me to touch on that as well?
Yeah, let me talk about that for a minute. Andy Sankey at EMA has applied for a, a grant that would cover body cameras for the entire county. It's kind of a shot in the dark and Chris can, can touch on that a little bit as well.
Yeah. Oh, so let me touch on that. I actually just had a phone call with our government affairs specialist for Motorola and he's very familiar with this grant. He said that they were so late to even pass the budget. First of all, you're not even likely to, to get it. If you do get it, you're not gonna get the full amount and more than likely, it's probably gonna be ten months from February of twenty twenty-five. So, with that being said, it's, it's not a really good option to wait, especially since you're equipped, ordered and you're probably not gonna give a order to equipment, so relying on that grant is, is not, I wouldn't think would be an option, but I just wanted to throw that out there. That was directly from our government affairs.
One option we do have is if we were to move forward with this five-year contract. In year two, the grant was awarded. We could stop the contract. They're willing to do that and we could have new equipment issued under the grant.
Cause the grant?
So essentially, we will cancel your existing contract and we can essentially rebuild you folks, you know, for, for the equipment to, to be covered.
Cause you can't just use then the grant money to feed into this that you'd already?
No, it has to be new equipment for the grant. Yes.
So would that be just the cameras? Cause he's talking about the software and everything.
This would be just for the body cameras, yes.
Just for the body cameras?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
And you all reached out to the county about their, their ARPA for this purpose and went to, right?
We didn't, no, we did not reach out to the county for any ARPA money. Last year, we had three different vendors come with cameras over a four-month period. We met with all of them. We tried to get something going with the county to do something with ARPA and that just fell through the cracks.
And I apologize, the paperwork is, is a bit of a mess. Do, do we have the information on those cameras then that, and the?
Yes.
Okay. Did you just have like this sheet or is there more?
Well, I didn't, it's an eighty-five page document, so I didn't wanna print that out and there's a lot of stuff that would probably, I can email it to all of you, but a lot of it is stuff above my head. It's?
No, I just, I'm talking, like, we're talking about the five-year financing, how much it would cost.
Yeah, that's, that's right on that capital.
Here.
Okay.
I'm gonna send this down to her, I didn't think that that was what I was looking for.
We can try and get a more summary page for the next one, too.
That's kinda what I was?
Boil down that into a little bit more detail, but not all the detail.
Like, how many cameras is this and?
This is, this is twenty WatchGuard body cameras, eleven replacement cruiser cameras and two interview room recording systems with the software to integrate it with the CAD system, the evidence management system.
Okay.
I heard something about an LPR system? What does that mean?
License plate readers, it's all, just all part of the system. It goes into a database. Just, it's a capability of, of the system.
So, you, he had talked about thirty-five thousand dollar trade-in value?
Yes.
Is that included in this two hundred and forty-eight thousand? So it's, has already been reduced?
Yes.
Okay.
The, the life expectancy of these cameras, you know, we, you pay, it would be a five-year ban to pay it off. Do you know, you know, after five years, are we, do you have to come back likely to redo it all, you know, similar?
So, yeah, I mean, I'll talk from our experience. We've got four cameras from twenty fourteen still in use.
Okay.
In the cruisers right now. We've reused them a couple of times, but they're at the end of life. Some of the buttons don't wanna work right, the microphone packs, sometimes they work, sometimes they don't, so, you know, ten years is a stretch.
Yeah, so I guess that my, the reason I asked the question, Gavin, is that, you know, after five years, if, you know, or wanna make sure that we, these things will still be working after five years, I say these things.
Yeah.
Important technology and equipment that we work out in five years, so we're not financing something beyond its expected life.
I'm gonna let him talk to that in just a second if he's there, but the body worn cameras are refurbished at year three, so you get new ones, but with the changes in technology, if we're getting five years out of something, and I know Jason can come in and attest to that, we're doing pretty good. Things are, things are moving technology-wise. Chris, you wanna talk about that?
Yeah, I'll talk about that. So, so we obviously include that refresh in there. It actually starts at the two and a half year mark to where you'll have a refresh coordinator work with your agency to get you new body cameras sent out and then you'll send the other ones back. So essentially, the in-car systems, you know, like he said, it would last, you know, maybe up to ten years. They're, they're pretty rugged, but with the body cams, they, they de-gradate, especially with the batteries, they're little batteries, so we include extra batteries with every body camera and, you know, just, you know, after the two and a half year mark, you're gonna get a brand-new body camera with a brand new mount and a brand new battery, so. And that, you know, after the five years, we, we expect you would sign another contract for the body cameras and you'd also get that, that extra refresh as well and just keep that, keep that going. But we surely don't expect you to replace the in-car video system every five years. That would be, that'd be a lot of money.
You know, is the in-car video system the lion's share of the cost of this?
Yes, yeah, it's, it's the, it's the bulk of the cost because you're talking about the installation of the system and you're also talking about the, the equipment. The body camera runs thirteen hundred dollars, the in-car system runs over six thousand.
Oh, okay.
Probably seven thousand-ish if you include the LPR, so it's a lot more expensive.
And with the leasing of police vehicles now, if we need to like reinstall everything, if we have a cruiser that expires, is that an additional cost or is that part of?
Yeah, so that's currently what we do when we do get new vehicles is we've been reusing, like these four from twenty fourteen, these have been in at least two vehicles, if not three, so far. So yes, we take them out, reinstall them. A lot of times, we end up buying new cabling, like three hundred and sixty-eight dollars so that we put actual new wires in and not try to reuse the old stuff.
But do we, the police officers, reinstall them?
Brown's Communication is a certified user for, installer for Motorola and so they do all that.
Okay, so that would be kind of lumped into the cost of?
Yes.
Reinstalling into new vehicles?
Yep.
Okay. So in five years, in theory, these, the ones in the cars are still working, the cameras need to be re-up, the body cams, but they're less expensive than the car, so in theory, in five years, you're coming back for something that's lower than this adjusted for inflation?
I, I would assume so, yes.
Yeah, it's, it's sixty-nine bucks a month per body camera, so if you wanna just do the math on how many body cameras that is per year, cause that includes everything, including refresh.
Okay, great.
If it gets to be five years, so then we own them, although maybe then they're old and we need to get new ones, but if we just own them, I assume we still have to pay for cloud support?
Correct. Yeah, right now, that, that number's seven hundred dollars per camera a year.
That's, that's the kinda stuff that I would love to see on here, because I, I get this, but, because that's on?
Most agencies don't do that, just because, cause the warranty and lose the refresh and it's a lot more money than you would expect to pay, you know, just for storage.
Say that one more time, Chris, you cut out in the beginning.
I said, most agencies don't choose to pay for the storage à la carte because you lose the warranty on it, which you have to pay for. If a body camera goes down after the five years and you're not under contract, you don't get that advanced replacement and you would have to pay half the body camera if it went down and also you have to, you know, you don't get that refresh every three years. So essentially, most agencies want service and that's why they choose to just sign a lease agreement and that's how they get everything in a bundle.
I, I, I understand that, but I guess my thing is, is I'd like to see what's in that lease agreement broken down, because in five years, we're gonna, we gotta think about five years, what is it that's gonna keep moving forward in future budgets and what is, you know, gonna have to replace some body cameras and those types of things. It would just be good to have the, the breakdown of that lease agreement.
Yeah.
I don't need eighty whatever pages.
Understood. I can't really tell you what the licensing cost is gonna be five years from now, but I can tell you the difference is around three thousand dollars a year for the lease agreement for the, was it around this whole?
Oh.
And the à la carte store.
Yeah.
So times seven hundred by twenty-two, ninety-nine by twenty-two times twelve, that's the yearly cost.
More than one page.
Chris, we'll, we'll touch base next week and come up with a work in sheet with that for them.
Sure. Yeah, I can give you a rough number for sure.
Yeah, perfect.
Thank you. Like what you did with the vehicles, how you broke it down for us.
Yep.
That'd be good, thank you.
Yep.
Nancy?
A different line of, of thinking on this, just to get more information, can you talk more about, you said that this was a recommendation for the accreditation? I'd appreciate a little bit of background about, remind me, how many departments are accredited, what this means and how this comes into part of keeping the accreditation? And I guess, scan of the landscape, what percentage of police departments in Maine have the cameras? How many are looking to go towards it? Just a perspective check like that.
Yeah, so for the accreditation, we were the ninth agency in the state of Maine to become accredited. It's a hundred and eighty-four standards now that we have to meet on a yearly basis. It's managed through a program called Power DMS. It's everything from evidence rooms, seizures, arrests, mental health, vehicle checks, you name it, it's in the accreditation, certain standards that we have to meet. There's roughly twenty to thirty agencies now that are credited in the state. So it was quite, it was quite an undertaking, it took us about two years to be able to get up to all the standards and a, a lot of it is maintaining our policies and making sure they're accurate, review of policies, yearly trainings that were required to do with the officers in certain areas, use of force, firearms, less lethal weapons, spike mats, handcuffing procedures, you name it, there's standards for that type of thing that we have to do for the yearly trainings. We do two trainings a year, so each officer is getting hands-on sixteen hours of training in those areas each year, plus policy reviews throughout the year. That's the accreditation. As far as body cameras, I don't know a percentage. I would say that we are in the few that don't have them.
So it's becoming the norm?
Yes.
For the reasons you outlined?
Yes.
Yeah, and I, I will echo that Maine State Police just signed a contract with us to body on cameras a couple of weeks ago, so I have, I have the large majority of the state, the majority of the agencies do have them and they use our product, especially all the sheriff's departments, but yeah, the large majority of them do.
Thank you. Is it a requirement for accreditation or just like?
No, it was a, it was a recommendation. It was not, it's not a requirement.
So it also, you know, with our officer-involved shooting that we had, it was, when that report comes out, there's gonna be a recommendation from the, from the panel that reviewed that, that, that we have, those cameras. And like, that review panel, I mean, it speaks to this, to the EMLE process that Sean was just talking about. We're very impressed with our policies, which all go through that and our offices, the training that they had and just the other piece to this would be if, not that we necessarily needed it for this particular incident, but if we had that, it's just another piece to protect our officer, the cities and it's just part of this whole proposal.
Any sense when that report's coming out?
I think we're wait, we, that will come out after the AG's office finishes their investigation and comes out with their report.
Months.
I, I don't?
We're, we're about three months away, two and a half months away before they have to release it.
Okay, thanks.
Is there already an internal sort of operating procedure, guidelines to use these cameras or will they, those be sort of created as the equipment comes in per every officer uses them all the time or?
Yeah, no, so for, we already have a, a mobile video policy that deals specifically with the cruiser cameras and when they're supposed to be activated and the microphone's supposed to be on, and then we would just incorporate into that policy the standards to deal with body cams and when they can be on and when they couldn't be on. There's some issues with some hospital settings and things like that, but those are all things we just need to work out, take into consideration.
And if you get twenty of them, that's enough for everybody to have?
Yes.
Will it be a requirement for them to wear it while they're on duty?
Yes.
Okay.
So, with this lease, if you hire another, you end up with twenty-one or twenty-two police officers, you just can add on to that contract?
Chris, did you hear that?
Yes. Yeah, it would be, it would be the sixty-nine dollars a month per, per camera for the cost of the camera with the licensing.
He, he cut in and out, a major part is, is the software. What the software does, we can actually redact faces on the video to be able to release to the public if we, if we needed to. These cameras are also, have a cell phone signal from them that shows when Um, these cameras are also, um, have a cell phone signal from them, uh, that shows, would show on the dispatch screen on where the officer is, so if they are out chasing somebody, we can pinpoint somebody. Uh, there's, there's a lot of features that, that play into these cameras. Uh, they also have, uh, a feature, yeah. Feature with, there's a sensor, uh, in your weapon holster, so if you do remove your weapon, the camera automatically come on. That's another, another safety feature that's, that's in there.
Interesting. Any other questions on this?
Thank you, Chris, I appreciate it. I'll be in touch next week.
Appreciate your time, thanks a lot.
So the next, the next item that we have for this is the TASER, um, upgrading the TASERS and we've, we've given you, we've given you a packet there, the, um, a proposal for the TASERS, but we've got some new updates that we just added in today, so the, um, Nate's gonna pass those out to you, should have the information in there, um, on the TASERS. I mean, the short of the TASER is we're asking for twenty-one TASER ten is what they're called now. Um, this will include, uh, batteries, uh, target, holsters, uh, docking station, um, brackets, cord, training magazines, uh, basically everything to make this functional for us. Um, and this also includes the training cartridges for the life of the, for the twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, for the training required for these TASERS. Um, so, and it also, you can see on there, um, you have the breakdown of the cost for beginning in August of twenty-four for the replacement of these going through to twenty-eight. Um, so just some background, we have, uh, we have, currently have, um, oh, ten, uh, twenty-two TASERS that we have, um, and we only have three of those that are still under warranty until February twenty-five and, and, um, those will be as of January of twenty-five, the warranties will no longer be any good, so basically we'll be having TASERS that don't have any more warranties on them. Uh, we have several that are being used that need to be taken out. Um, we're still using them because we haven't had any, anything new yet. Um, so if you wanna go, Sean, uh, I know we've talked to Axon about, about getting a quote, and this is the newest quote that we have on those.
The one for?
It's a five-year plan again, similar.
Yeah, a five-year plan, we, it's not a, this is not a lease, we own these at the end of five years. Um, they're fully warranted during the time we have them. Um, they're a rechargeable system compared to the batteries that we, uh, are buying now, so there's a little bit of, of savings there, but it's, it's about, it's about forty-six-hundred dollars an officer for the five years, um, and that includes all the training, the equipment. Uh, if we were to buy this all individually, according to the sales rep, it's somewhere in the fifty-six-hundred-dollar range to be able to do so, that, that is the savings by buying the bundle package over the five years. We can pay him upfront, a lump sum, or we can pay him how they have it broken out over the five years, there is no better deal by paying upfront. So.
And there is some, we are, our old TASERS, we are getting some credit for those.
Yeah. The, uh, the ones we have right now, uh, the only ones, they're not, they don't, they're end of life, they're not making them anymore, um, they're, the X-two, what they have on the shelf for stock is what they have left. So if we do break one and we send it in to get fixed, uh, we may get one back, we may not. We're kinda at that point. Um, it would be difficult for us to have two different types of TASERS for training purposes, um, it becomes kind of a headache. So it's easier to have a fleet of one, uh, type model for this less lethal weapon. This was also, um, another one that was in the queue for last year that wasn't brought We didn't, uh, there's no extras, we don't have any extra ones, uh, figured in here just because, uh, they guarantee that if we break one, we call them, they send it out next day air, the next day, so we're not, we've said we could get by instead of buying another forty-six-hundred-dollar unit.
How long ago did we buy the current ones you guys are using?
We started in, uh, we started the TASER program in two thousand and seven, uh, and those lasted, uh, somewhere between five to ten years, and then we've been on to these X-twos. Um, I don't have the exact date.
Is it?
It, it's long enough that they're not making that platform anymore, so it's been at least ten years.
So they've, these ones you guys are using have lasted more or less ten years?
Yeah, we bought, um, we bought the extended warranties with them when we purchased them, they didn't have bundle packages back then like they're doing now. So we got, uh, a five-year warranty on the, on the TASER itself. Um, we have some that, um, in the notes here that the display doesn't work, it still works fine, but you can't see what's going on, uh, and then we have one that, uh, that is corrupt, uh, but it's not, none, none of these are under warranty, so we can't send them back and get new ones. Usually what happened in the warranty program is if you sent one back, they just sent you a new one, they didn't even question it.
So that's a similar design to this, if one breaks, you send it in and you get one back?
Yes.
How often do they actually get, how often do you use them? Do people use them?
Well, when we first got them, we used them quite a bit, uh, and then when word got around town, um, it changed. I mean, that's the honest answer, and, um, so now they are a-
Do these people behave themselves?
Yes.
Okay.
They're a deterrent. When they come out of the, when they come out of the holster, there's a couple lasers on them, there's a light, and when people see that, uh, it's now a, it's a deterrent. Um, two or three times a year, we may actually deploy one fully.
Hmm.
Uh, a lot of times, uh, you know, unfortunately, it's in, uh, the hospital setting, um, when we're at the ER, uh, with patients that are completely out of control, assaultive, um, to regain compliance. Uh, we can't use pepper spray in the hospital because of the ventilation system, uh, so that leaves us that type of force option to use.
Any other questions on this?
Have there been negative health, I mean, obviously, other than like that probably they're fairly painful, but, yeah, especially in the hospital setting, have they caused any, uh, health effects?
We have not had any claims of such, yeah. And everybody that works at our agency has been, uh, tased.
That's part of the process?
Yeah. Patrick wants to try everything out.
And we did have, I mean, when we first got him, we actually had, uh, there was a city councillor that got tased, he volunteered at the training.
I can't remember who that was.
Don't tase me, bro.
It was Matt, Matt Foster.
Was it Matt Foster that did it?
Yeah.
I can't remember, did you guys dip up in that?
Funny that he's not here anymore.
You volunteers?
No.
Uh, these are projectile cartridges, not, you know, go up to somebody?
It does both. Uh, it's, it's primarily, uh, a projectile cartridge with darts that come out, um, and then you can also, um, come in and make skin contact with, with the weapon itself.
I have to tell you, if I saw that red light, I'd be a complete liar.
Or the noise itself would be.
Yes. You say, as, as flippant as we're being, and it's just because this is our eighty-fifth meeting on budgets, the phrase "in a hospital setting to regain compliance" is sobering as to the value that these have for the officers, for the people you're trying to help and for everybody else around. That's a pretty heavy-duty phrase, "hospital setting to regain compliance." Um, that's not part of my regular workday.
Well, unfortunately, it is our regular workday most days, um, and, uh, I, I don't see things getting any better there, and we need to be able to, uh, keep the staff up there safe and also the officers trying to, uh, subdue some of these people, uh, so that they don't have lifelong injuries.
I think they also, I mean, you, you ask how many times we use them, I mean, sometimes if you only use them once, they pay for themselves. I mean, you know, it's hard to gauge number of times you use them, there were.
I mean, we had the same question for Joss of life, it doesn't minimize the value, it's just context and trying to understand what we're talking about here, because, yeah, not part of my normal life.
I would imagine, obviously, if you have to deploy a weapon, um, when you're on duty, if you can use a less lethal weapon system rather than a firearm, that's best for everyone.
Definitely. That is the goal.
Yes.
Would those, with drawing a TASER, also trigger the body cam to activate?
No, it would not. Um, Motorola WatchGuard is only set up to have one device be able to trigger, uh, and to me, it's more important that the firearm be activated than the TASER would be.
Yeah. Okay. Is there anything else in capital improvement?
That's it.
That's it? So do you want to go to the police department or?
So now, so moving on to the budget, so you guys got the coffee, um, of everything, we, we kinda broke it down, um, so we gave you the, outlined our operating budget, um, with a summary page on that, and, uh, then we separated out separately the build, the new building lease, um, and the building lease was a little bit different, um, this year, just because we haven't been in there a full, a full year. Uh, lease payment obviously is set, but, uh, utilities and stuff, uh, we'd been in there from October to the, I think the, our breakdown here was to the end of February, first of March, what we were paying utilities, and kinda took an average of those to try to figure roughly where we'd be within a year. Obviously, from October to February is probably the most expensive time to be in a place, so the numbers are a little bit higher than what did we go, so we tried to figure an average on those. Um, so that's broken down in there on a separate. Um, we also broke down the vehicle lease costs, well, Sean's gonna speak to that a little bit more on, um, vehicle leases. Um, then we, uh, broke down the communication operation budget, um, as it, obviously, we, uh, we control the dispatch at the police department, so they have a separate budget. Um, so for the police department operation budget, FY twenty-four, our budget was one million, eight hundred and six thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars, um, and FY twenty-five, our proposal, uh, has gone to two million, twenty thousand, three hundred and twenty-six dollars, which is an increase of two hundred and thirteen thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine dollars, or eleven point eight percent overall. Uh, so one point, one, one million, seven hundred and ninety-one thousand, five hundred and twenty-six dollars of that is payroll increases. Those payroll increases, uh, are due to the CBA from the last year, not last year, but year before when the budget, when, um, the contract was approved. Um, so that roughly, that remains, there remain two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine, uh, the operating costs within the department. Um, and you can see from the summary page, uh, we just kinda put in the increases of the items that were increased and a couple that were decreased. Um, so obviously, one of the decreases was a five-thousand-dollar decrease in the, um, vehicle maintenance part, and that's obviously due to the lease. Um, we just don't have, we don't spend as much money on vehicle maintenance with the leases, so that brought that part down. Um, that's just kind of a quick review, uh, if you guys have had a chance to look at it, if you've got any questions on that.
The other thing, one thing we tried to do is we looked at some actuals over the last three years of what were spent in the accounts, uh, and so we brought some of those up, uh, to some of the figures that had actually been spent to be in that ballpark.
Do we have any of those numbers?
The actuals?
From two thousand and twenty-three?
Yeah, I provided a sheet in that packet that goes all the way back to twenty sixteen to actuals.
Oh, it's the last page, okay.
Looks like these, Tammy?
No, it's not, it's the seller.
It's the sellers.
So we don't, we have this. Which is different.
So we can get those real quick for you. Did you have one specifically, Tammy, that you were?
Well, I just wanted to look at some of those payroll line items and also the fuel, has the fuel gone up that much?
Last three years, that's roughly what we spent on fuel.
About seventy?
The fuel wasn't, the, so what Sean had mentioned, this time we put in actuals, what we were actually paid, so that, that was a budgeted amount, which wasn't even close, as you can see, we just kinda went back to the, so that, that's an actual amount, roughly what we spent on fuel.
How do you, do we have a contract for fuel or do you guys just fill up at the pump like you're on?
Uh, we use, uh, the same services highway and everybody else uses, it's the WEC service, the cards work everywhere, and I don't know what the rebate is to the city on that, but there is some rebate.
Okay, so the whole citywide fleet uses the same?
Yes.
Then we also get our state so, uh, state fuel tax back as well, we have to apply for it, get that money back, unless it's taken off the WECs, do you know? It's automatically taken off the WECs?
The, the state return?
Yeah.
No, it's a, I see a, I see a refund on the bill itself, so I don't, I don't think we get billed it to begin with, they, it looks like they refund it right on the bill.
Okay. So it is either reduced.
When the former police chief became the city manager, we created the new role of deputy police chief, so I just wonder, now that we've separated those roles, do we still need a deputy police chief?
Well, that, that's what, we've spoken to Charlie about that, about the operations of-
I think we do. I think, um, it makes sense to do organization as chief, deputy chief, and the captain, um, you know, to be a full person, I actually looked at some other organizations, they have a similar structure, so.
Oh, you know, I will say, there, there are a lot of duties that Sean and I do, and, um, with the M-LEAP, the other stuff that's coming up, there's just more and more of them that need even more attention from the admin level. And the other, the other thing that it brings to is it, it allows somebody to learn the job going on through, so as time goes by, you have somebody within the department trained that's gonna be will, capable to take over as deputy chief or chief down the line, so you're not, you're not bringing people in that don't know how to do the job. Each, all three of, all three of us would know how to do all of our jobs if somebody leaves or goes, which is what we kinda, Sean and I kinda took up the slack.
Certainly came in handy lately.
Yes, it has.
Another thing we, I mean, we do more than I've ever seen is four-year requests. Uh, sometimes I spend two to three hours a day, most weeks, looking at four-year requests, uh, records, records checks for reports for DHS, for the federal government. Uh, some days it's a full-time job just doing that, so.
Along with everything, having scheduling to day long.
I think the other thing is-
Yeah, it's just the-
Policy reviews, developments, uh, trainings.
You throw, uh, you throw like the officer-involved shooting in the mix, it's kinda, it ties, ties you up for months.
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't, I don't doubt that there's plenty of work to be done, it's just it's basically adding another person, because that person used to pretty much be working in City Hall.
Yeah, but-
So it seems like we should be explicit.
I mean, they, they did have both, I mean, that was the previous arrangement, um, was that there's a chief, deputy chief, and a captain. Um, I do think in terms of readiness of the station, the administrative burdens, I know talking to Captain Willie, um, you know, this is a police department that in the early two thousands has taken about a thousand calls a year, now they're taking eight thousand. Um, and, uh, is a pretty, you know, extensive piece in the police force, so I, you know, and looking at other police forces in the area, that was, you know, kind of their, their force readiness, so we're happy to review if we wanna try and save some money there, um, but.
No, I just wanna be explicit if we're adding.
I don't really consider an addition because of the-
So are you gonna, so if this all ends up happening, you promote from within, would you hire another police officer or are you just gonna do promotions?
Ideally, we would like to hire another police officer, um, I mean.
Is that in the budget to do that?
Yes. The, the chief's position, fifty thousand of it was funded last year already in this, in the current budget we're in, uh, and so we've placed sixty thousand in there, uh, to what the council agreed on for that salary, so it's already in there. So if, if, uh, there's a, a hiring process for the chief, uh, and there's movement within the department, then we would backfill accordingly.
Yeah, and this is the other piece of, you know, I think we've got our posting hopefully coming up soon on the, um, that piece, well, that could change the- Well, that could change the dynamics of what goes on here, but the new captain, you know, or there could be an internal piece and then move it within the organization as well. I think you have a sergeant as the next, there could be additional kind of nominees. I think you have one outstanding position, right, that we, we need to be filling anyway soon, so.
Yeah, we've had, we had one officer just leave last week and go to Bar Harbor, so we do have, we do have a position to fill now.
I would also say the, one of the things I've been very impressed with, both, I think we've had like four or five budget meetings on this, with this group, the organization, structures that they've put in place have actually, I think are helpful in other ways. But, yeah, it's been a, it's, it's been really helpful to kind of learn about their, their organizational pieces too, so.
The budget history is helpful, I hope. I appreciate the detail in this budget too.
Yeah.
Good budget to leave.
Anything else on the operation, or do you want to move to the? I know, so the next one we, we kind of had in mind was the facilities. So we had the lease payment for the building, which is figured in for, for this new budget. One sixteen, two fifty, one fifty. Utilities, we roughly averaged out, put in for forty-three, six, forty-three, six hundred. So that's going to cover the electric, water, sewer, propane. We broke down in, in here what we had spent from October first to February first. Pricing on the fuel was a dollar forty-nine is what we paid. So, like I said, we haven't been in there a full year, so these are kind of estimates. Maintenance, this is just like minor repairs, stuff that we had to, like the cleaning. We did do a, we put the cleaning out to a bid and we hired, we hired a cleaning guy. And we, he gets three, three cleans a week, four hours each cleaning, which comes out to about hundred, four hundred and eighty dollars a week. So there's a yearly, the heat pump, cleaning, maintenance, basically changing the filters, mowing. That's a mowing, and we have limited mowing, just dry, we're climbing and stuff, the highway department, we work with them on that. So there's no real upfront cost on that. Miscellaneous supplies throughout the building, the, just cleaning floor wax and saw for the winter, items like that. We have a handicap lift out front now, that has a yearly inspection of a hundred and thirty dollars. And a seventy-five dollar spec fee for somebody to come and look at. We have a fire, fire extinguisher inspections. And we have a, in our evidence processing area, we have a, what's called a, basically it's a drug filtration hood. So it's just thing, for the officers, if they're testing fentanyl or some of these drugs that, that could harm them, they can turn this hood on, filters, filters, the, the drugs and the powder, if there were any, anything that came out. So those, those filters have to be replaced every year, and then the cost of replacing those filters is eleven hundred bucks. So that's fact. So I think that's pretty much everything. Obviously, this would go into our whole budget, but we just wanted to break the facilities part out just to kind of show you, because this is new. Obviously, we all know about the building.
Thank you. I'm looking at the sheet here with all the payroll items on it, and it doesn't match the, the write-off.
That's because that is the payroll for a forty-hour, eight-hour-a-day schedule. So they did not figure in, our, our current schedule is thirty-six and forty-eight. So over the fourteen-day period, they were, they averaged forty-two hours. We have to pay them two hours of overtime each week. So that's not figured in to that.
So this is not correct, then?
That is a base forty-hour a week, if you will.
Gotcha, okay.
So the, so the two hours that they get each week on average, over the fourteen-day, because it's a fourteen-day cycle. One week they work thirty-six, one week they work forty-eight. So for the forty-eight is regular, they get four hours of overtime. So over fifty, over a fifty-two-week cycle, they average two hours of overtime a week.
It's not a big deal, but in your utilities, you, you did it times twelve months instead of four quarters, so you're kind of double on that.
Yep.
Water and sewer?
Yep, yep.
Holy cow, twenty-eight hundred dollars a month for electricity.
Yeah, it, it does seem a lot, but the whole bottom half is heat pumps along with humidity-controlled system for the evidence room. And then, we don't have any fuel oil, all we use is propane in the winter. So propane bill is not that much in the scheme of things. And the only thing that propane controls is the top half of the building.
Oh, okay.
And so we don't have, we don't have a full year on that to know exactly what that's going to cost. And there was some talk at one point that they were going to try to get that on the solar.
I was just going to ask you, you're not on that solar, obviously.
We are not, to my knowledge, no.
You'd be one that would be, you're such a high user.
Well, those heat pumps are down, like you said, in the bottom part, and that's where everybody comes in and out. So that door is constantly opening and closing.
I did speak with Jim about the electricity bill, and he didn't think that was too far off compared to what City Hall was, so.
For what it's worth. Question, the, so you, you split out, we have the budget, and then you've also split out lease payment and communications. You've given us the really helpful, like, ten-year history.
Yep.
Is that ten-year history doesn't, wouldn't include things such as the lease payment or communication?
Correct.
So that's just what we're looking at?
So, yeah, I did this of just the police department, I wasn't able to capture the communications part before we got locked out of munis and the switch happened. So that's why you only got the police department. But it would not have captured any, any of the lease or anything like that. John, you were looking at, kind of funny about the schedule, are you good with that?
Hmm, yeah.
Okay.
The hours, I was thinking forty-eight and thirty-six are an average of forty-four weekly?
Forty-two.
Forty-two.
Over the fourteen-day.
I see. How, why is it done looking?
Uh, because we, we are able to, under the fair labor standard laws, able to have variance in schedules. And our, if we have a set schedule, it could be a twenty-one-day set schedule, or it could be a fourteen-day set schedule. And we have the eighty-hour core, and anything over that has to be the overtime. So one week they get thirty-six, one week they get forty-four regular, and four hours overtime.
So this all started during COVID too, we, they were all on ten-hour shifts, and then during COVID, you got to be able to have the twelve-hour shifts, correct?
Yeah, we, we did go to it during COVID, but quite honestly, it's been a retention and recruitment tool as well. We had people that were working four weekends in a row, and people want to be off on the weekends. So now they work, every other Friday and Saturday, they have off. So that's helped with people's family lives and, and the retention of officers.
I would also say on that note, having the job posting, researching a lot of other organizations and how they do their postings and organizational structure. One of the things that struck me was the good retention rates in our police department. Just came off news article after news article, we can't find police officers, we can't find police officers, we can't find them. And kind of came back to this, like, you haven't come to me saying about the recruitment stuff, and they seem to be holding on to the people they get, which is a good sign for the department as well.
Yeah, over, you know, the past few years, we have developed some pretty good retention. Like Sean said, the schedule just cruises, train, and, you know, the new lease. Everybody's got the, you know, getting into a nice new vehicle, new equipment. Like we talked about with some of the cattle stuff, that just goes to that whole thing, giving somebody the, the right stuff to work with. Makes people want to come here and stay here, they don't have poor equipment, so.
That's even after you've tased all of them.
Through the tasing, they're tough enough to say.
Other question, to pull together the overall police budget. We have the ten dash two hundred police, ten dash two twenty communications, the vehicle lease, and the facilities budget. So there are four pieces to make it having the police function.
Yeah, except the communications, it's a separate budget, it's really, it's not the police budget, it's a separate.
Okay.
It's a fire and.
Okay, so that's more, all right, so you're, there are three components to the budget.
Correct.
Facilities, vehicle lease, and the overall.
Yes.
And Tammy, I was thinking about, you know, I was thinking about this in the budget too, in terms of, this is kind of, the lease is a new light item in some ways. And like how we build this in, I know I, I kind of went down a few rabbit holes, I'm probably going to go a few more, and like. Yeah, in my experience, you do, you know, you have some shared services and, you know, we could essentially be charging the city manager's office for their part of the lease of this building. You can handle it that way, and then you can kind of have some cross, you know, analysis. Or you just have a general facilities budget, and I don't know how you've handled that in the past or with this new piece. So it doesn't look like the police department is jumping up.
Yeah.
You know.
I think last year, we had the lease in debt service, it's like its own department.
Little piece, so.
And so then it got moved during, I think, the Cassell, it kind of, some things got moved around to have a good look at what the police department is costing us, which I, I get that, but it may be better to just put it into the, back into debt service.
Interesting.
So, and then.
Because your leases, when you're, when you're looking at arbitrage and some other things that you have to when you're borrowing, your leases are considered borrowing. So if you've got them all over the place in your budget, it, it's much more difficult financially to, to be able to make sure you piece everything together for your bond attorney and for leases. You, you really should have a good idea of what your debt service is and a lease is a debt service.
So your lease kind of packages part of debt service, and that's how you handle the budget, not departmentally, but.
And with, like, for Gazby, Gazby, when you're issuing your financial statements, you can move that somewhere to meet their guidelines and restrictions, so.
So would you put the school leases in there too?
No, they'll be in, I mean, it's all included, but that will be in their financial statements.
Their.
It's all a separate financial statement, but then they're brought together.
Government-wide, but still, they have their own financial statements.
They have a separate audit process and our audit, so.
But if any other, like, public works or whatever had a lease, that would all go into?
Be going to there.
The non-school department lease pool included.
Just, I just wanted to add, while we're talking about the lease, I just got this information a couple of days ago, but. So we did, we were supposed to move into that building on July first, because of a few different factors. We didn't move in until October first. So Kearney Investments sent me and me a copy of, basically, the lease agreement was extended, so we won't be, we won't be required to start paying this one sixteen, two fifty-one until October first. So this was originally put in for the new budget for July first, which is kind of how we wanted everything to coincide. But because we're in a little bit late, it's not going to do that now. So I, I think that for the first, for the, for three months, we're not going to go into the one sixteen. We're going to stay at what we're at right now until October first. So it's going to be a little bit of difference in there, we'll, we'll rework that.
What is the number now?
Right around a hundred and three to a hundred and nine.
Three to a hundred and nine, I can't, off the top of my head, I don't remember, but it's like, it's going to save us a few thousand dollars.
Okay. But it's not a hundred and thirty-three, it's not this.
Twenty-two.
Yep.
Oh, never mind, that's a different.
And you had that increasing year-over-year for the ten-year lease?
Yes.
Current lease? Do you remember with the?
Three percent. Uh, until ten years, and then it can be looked at by either, either party, if it's in agreeance that it's too high or too low.
Trust me, we wouldn't agree if it was too low.
Uh, moving on to vehicle leases, yes? So we leased five vehicles last year. During the year, we lost two vehicles because of accidents. So we signed two more vehicles onto lease, so we're currently leasing seven vehicles. The proposal is to lease two more vehicles to bring us up to nine. They would be, we would continue with the Chevys, those have worked out well. It saved us, a few weeks ago, the deputy chief and I spent our week driving back and forth to Bangor, dropping off and picking up the remainder of the Fords that we have left to get recalls done. And then to find out, to get up there to find out that they didn't do some of the recalls, because the VIN number was off by one digit. For the paperwork, but they never bothered to call us. So the Chevys have worked out well, we, knock on wood, we have not had any problems with them. Obviously, they're still under full warranty. And so for this, for this fiscal year, really only requesting for the lease thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and seventy-three dollars, assuming that we would encumber the roughly forty-seven thousand dollars that would be left in the lease account from insurance payments for the cruisers that were lost during this year.
Can you just, I'm a little bit confused by that, can you explain that? So you had five, but two of them.
We had, well, we had five on lease.
Yeah, we had five on lease.
Yeah, and we've leased two more since, because we've totaled two cruisers during the year.
Those were not leased, the total?
No, no.
Oh, okay, I thought those were the least ones.
Right, and unfortunately, they were not the high-mileage vehicles either. So we got a lot of money for them from the insurance companies. So that's why we'll have some encumbrance in that account to be able to cover the lease payment for this coming year. The lease payment for this coming year, if we didn't have that money, would be estimated at about eighty-seven thousand. Prices of vehicles have gone up, we don't know the exact price or what the government rebates are exactly going to be doing right now. But for Chevy Tahos, the vehicle price is somewhere in the fifty-six thousand dollar range, but we don't know the full government rebate yet. They haven't come up with what that's going to be. And so we're looking at about eleven hundred dollars a month for those, which is up a little bit. From the last one that we leased was nine eighty a month, and that was because of that was replaced one of the total vehicles.
Were they all Chevy Tahos that you're leasing?
Yes.
Does this bring the total of this year to seven leased or nine?
To nine. To nine leased.
That's adding additional to the, this year compared to last year?
No, we're not adding any vehicles, we'd be getting rid of two vehicles. Yep, yep, we get one vehicle that currently is almost at a hundred thousand miles, that we'd be getting rid of sooner. That would be the first one to go, and then I'm going to wait as long as I can in the fiscal year to lease the next one, to make sure that we're getting rid of another very high-mileage vehicle instead of turning it in early. So that full amount that we need might, may go down even a little bit more, depending on, but some of it's going to depend on availability as well.
How long does it usually take to turn that around? Like when you, you sign the lease, how long does it take to get?
The last one was about two months, but it was partly, really, the big turnaround is waiting for the equipment from the dealers to show up for the, for the equipment install, for like the console or the partitions and the cages and things like that. But it did work out well last year, the vehicles, the first five that we leased came from McGovern's, and they came outfitted. So that worked out very well.
What do you do with like the old stuff that's in the cruiser, that you're getting rid of, like the cages and all that? Does it just get dumped, or what is it?
Uh, we've got a building, we've got it all sitting in because it's not really worth anything, but I don't like, I don't like to throw anything away because you never know when you might need.
Your sale.
Well, you might need something for, I mean, one of the Fords.
Glue tar on it.
We might break something, one of the Fords, and I get parts up there that we can go rob to fix it and not cost us a bunch of money.
We have sold some of that to other agencies. They have all the vehicles that don't have the new stuff like we have. So somebody might call and say, "Do you have a cage for whatever year?"
Where do you keep that stuff?
Uh, we got a spawn up there.
What about the training facility?
Yeah.
So like, and then you buy new computers, modems, cameras, radar, well, the cameras you won't because you're going to outfit those, those won't be included in this, but?
Right, yeah, so.
Radar, everything's brand-new?
Yeah, not, not everything is brand-new, no. I try to reuse, as long as Jason lets me, the modems, at least two vehicles. But some of them, sometimes with the, when we've purchased them and the service to be able to keep them functioning is outdated, we got to buy a new one. Radars, we try to get all the radars through the Bureau of Highway Safety Grants. Sometimes we can't, though, and we try to get at least two vehicles out of those, so we're talking ten years. Lights, we try to, there's a few lights that we reuse, and we've refurbished a couple. But quite honestly, it's better off to have them under, there's a five-year warranty on those lights. It's better off to be under the warranty, and it just saves us a lot of time with the dealer getting them fixed. They just put new ones on and we're back running, we're not having a car down for a while. And then the computers, yes, those are new every vehicle, just because they run all the time in the heat and the cold. And they're getting fired up in the cold, and it's just five years on one of those is all it takes.
Sure.
Are they specialized computers? Do you still have the Toughbooks? Are they?
Yeah, no, we don't even buy the Toughbooks anymore. We buy like the, we buy a Dell, it's like a mediocre Toughbook, and it's worked out. We haven't had a lot of issues. They're touchscreen, and they have a lighted keyboard.
Pretty much, at this point, those cruisers are in office for them. They have printers in there to print out everything. So limits their time in the office. They can do a lot of that stuff right out on the street.
Do you have one K nine either?
We do, yes. Moving on.
So we got the communication budget. So you can see from the communication budget, so last year, the total budget for communications was three hundred and twelve thousand nine hundred and three dollars. The request for this year is three fifty-three, eight oh eight, which is an increase of forty thousand nine oh five, or a thirteen percent increase. And this, that total increase is just due from the CBA, just from the payroll increase.
What does, what's CBA?
Collective bargaining agreement. Everything else in here has pretty much stayed the same. We increased a couple of little things just because it costs, it costs to, a little more to go to training now. It costs a little bit more to, for somebody to stay the night. Just training fees for the, the companies that offer these trainings have all jumped up a hundred bucks here and a hundred bucks there. And this kind of adds to the increase in that part of the math. All these increases are, are from, from the CBA. So the, on this budget, you're not seeing, we have to add another item, line item of telephone. We found out that the telephone for the police department or communications was, for whatever reason, being billed to the facilities. And it was being billed to the, what was it?
Moore Center.
Moore Center. For twelve thousand dollars a year. So those, that's for the landlines, and it's for the police and fire fiber. So that's twelve thousand dollars a year that, now that they've got it straightened out, it's going to come to us.
So that's why, a version we have has that included, and it's up to it.
Yeah.
Nearly seventeen percent.
It's the fiber for all the radio towers for the police, fire, and highway, and then the numerous lines we have at the police department. I still think there's another outstanding bill out there for some phone lines for the radio tower, but I can't quite place it yet. But it was mentioned to me.
Is communications also related to fire and EMS, or is just?
Nope.
This is for all public safety?
This is, yeah, this is for the dispatch center in the building that does police, fire, highway, water, the whole nine yards from the city.
I can't remember if dispatch moved out to your new building or?
They did, yeah.
And we're still using the county for, like, eleven to seven?
Yep, eleven o'clock.
That's the professional service increase of sixteen sixty-five, so we're at like thirty-eight thousand and change now for the overnight service.
So the county does the overnight service, too?
Over at the RCC, yes. Well, eleven PM to seven AM.
Do they call up the highway and stuff in the winter for us, too?
Not well. So the officers are supposed to tell them to call the highway, yes.
You have two on during the day, two correct, two dispatchers?
Our dispatch runs, we have twelve-hour shift with dispatch, so they run from seven in the morning to seven in the evening. And then another one comes in at eleven in the morning to eleven in the evening. So there's an overlap during, during our busy time. Well, we have the majority of the caller, it could be busy at any time, but the majority, so we have two people there between eleven and seven.
Do you expect that to change with the change in EMS?
So, I, I, yes, I did expect that to change. We built in another, another dispatch station. We built that with the anticipation of, of us getting busier. If they go, if they go full EMS, I mean, we're going to have to hire more. There's no way around it. They're busy now. Two of them sometimes can't even keep up with it.
Does the county step in for overloaded, is it during the day or just?
It's us, yeah.
I mean, sometimes it does get busy where some of us that can dispatch, we go out and help. Doesn't happen very often, yeah.
See, I heard you on the radio the other day, so you must have been helping.
It's amazing, just to think about it. At one point, we had just one dispatcher.
With one screen, now they got six screens.
Yeah, one dispatcher with a screen sitting at the desk, Ellsworth is grown, so, Regent's grown, so.
So eight thousand?
Those are rough figures, I know, but Sean and I were talking.
Yeah, no, we're eight thousand is calls, and the fire department's got to be three or four thousand now. You know, you know, they did under a thousand before, and it's just chaotic some days.
To me, it was kind of indicative, and I'd love to get those numbers across other types of departments. I'm like, obviously, the population hasn't grown eightfold since the early two thousands, but the demand on government services, we talked about regulations, you know, flag laws, these pieces that like just require more and more and more.
Well, in the summer months, too, Ellsworth grows, too.
Yeah, right now, I mean, we're averaging somewhere around six hundred calls a month, and we're not even into the busy season yet.
Come the summertime, I mean, this place is just, it's, it's just flooded, so.
Is there a vast majority of those calls you could put into a particular category? Like a wellness check for safety, or some sort of, I, I, we saw something like that during budget season last year down the river. There were sort of categorizations.
It kind of, it kind of goes by season. I mean, I think, you know, in the summertime, our accidents increase. There's just so much more traffic. So the guys are going to accidents, shoplifting's increased. You know, our, we have, shoplifting is probably our biggest, biggest call that we take year-round. I would say.
Motor vehicle complaints.
Right.
Traffic complaints.
Cell phones, so you get, everybody calls when somebody passes them, or, you know, I mean, we're constantly, or we're receiving calls from other agencies. They might get a call from Holden, and the vehicle's gone through, and it comes through, you know. We get about everything.
No, it's on my checklist, is, you know, the police have some of the most interesting data. They can be analyzed longitudinally. I do, I, yeah, when I get the checklist down a little bit, I'd love to dive in and maybe talk a little more about that. I think I did look at some previous stuff on annual reports, too, on their, on their things.
It used to be for the annual report, you did a breakdown of the type of calls.
I don't think I'm seeing those.
I think so, you know, you used to do that.
I'll, I'll send you one for twenty twenty-three.
That'd be great, thank you.
Yep.
Maybe year-over-year for like the last five years.
This would be interesting to see how much.
Twenty years.
Right now.
Maybe write out some transcripts of some of the more interesting ones.
No, I said we're right now.
Getting tired, though.
I mean, that's, some of the stuff we're talking about is patrol. I mean, our two detectives are, I mean, they're right off, right? We, I mean, we could use another detective. I'm just busy with a lot of sex crimes, just keeping track of any of the child sex offenders. They, they have a whole list that they have to run down. You're in charge of our evidence room. We have a great system now that we're in that new building. Just, we're busy in pretty much every aspect of the police department.
Thank you. To conclude, we have, um.
What happens next?
So next we have a, we'll kind of go into nonprofits and affiliated groups, so that's the, um.
Oh, I thought you meant tonight. I was like.
Oh, no, no, no. That's on Monday, right? Just tase me now.
Tase me, bro. So Nate and I will circle up and.
The twenty-ninth?
Twenty-ninth, and then we also have one for five-six and, but to review in five-thirteen. I might hold back on that one and do the five-twenty to kind of give us, to make sure that we're in a good place for it. But let me, let me do some timeline things. I know I want to bring in Tammy and Michelle for kind of a after-action report of where we're at now to talk about the thing you talked about as well, of how we restructure these things, how we go into the next round, so it's efficient as it can be. And, yeah, but we just want to do a little bit of kind of a planning session for that.
May twentieth, I believe, is a council meeting?
Yes, the council meeting is May twentieth, but I think, we talked to Michelle originally, I think we're probably going to be looking at that June as the final vote for the, uh.
Give us plenty of time to go through.
Yeah, for the July first switch over, so that, May twentieth probably won't be, that's what I'm thinking, maybe we push back to do a better planning, vice another week. And also, everybody can kind of just rest their brains for one week or in between that budget piece. And thinking that June, whatever that third Monday in June is.
I'm looking forward to July, when we'll have a council meeting.
It's going to be glorious.
So are you saying May sixth and thirteenth, you don't expect, I've got those as budget as needed?
I'm thinking of the, this, the thirteenth as the one that, the as needed, is that we'll, we'll probably pump the brakes on and take that as a planning week. Because that's going to give us a little bit of time to, I think, staff and everybody here, we need, we just need that to plan.
Take your time.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And knowing that the five-twenty council meeting is probably not the vote date, it's going to be the June vote date. So there'll probably be, sadly, there will probably be more added on this, but.
Not two or three a week, it's great.
No, you know, we'll talk about that and the planning for this, too. We're going to kind of work backwards from that June meeting and kind of where we're at now, where we need to be, and then planning those weeks for how we're going to create a work plan to get there. And then we'll get you an updated budget, budget schedule for that.
Because I think when we get, you know, discussing some of these numbers, and we've got to go back, there may be times that we say, can you go back and ask about this again? We don't have, you know, the notes, because we've been a couple of months, and it's, but it's just going to be hard to remember everything that, that we had talked about or had any questions about, these numbers or that numbers. So, I, I, you know, I just would like to have enough time that we can, that we're not rushed in June to try to do two or three meetings in a week because we got to get it done.
Yeah.
You know, so. But that said, I'm deleting May sixth?
No.
No, not yet.
Yeah, May sixth will be like outside organization.
Sorry, so close.
Sorry, May thirteenth.
I'm excited, I can't wait for the May sixth meeting where we can bring things to you.
The twenty-ninth, as I understand it, is outside organizations, but also like Recreation Commission, part of Ellsworth Chamber. And then the sixth, May sixth will be the nonprofits and other.
Yeah.
Okay, I've got six still as budget review if needed, so I'll update that.
No, May thirteenth was the budget review one that I'm thinking of.
Yeah.
Giving us one week of break to kind of.
And by that, you mean, you think there wouldn't be one on the thirteenth?
Correct, the thirteenth is the one that I would like to probably reschedule.
But I can dream.
And then there is social services review discussion.
And then, just to say it out loud, the thirtieth is the courthouse meeting.
I was going to say that, too.
Six PM.
Where's that at?
Courthouse.
In the courthouse, the existing courthouse.
Yeah.
I'll be there.
That's next Tuesday.
Not in the, the plot of land, but.
It's a nice house there, so.
What time is that?
Six.
Six, six o'clock?
I did, I think they're, yeah, they're fine. I talked to a couple people.
I'll probably be there, yeah.
Some people will be there, okay.
I'll probably be there.
We're going to be there as well.
Yeah. I can't make it, but.
Yeah, you, good.
But you just represent the West side.
Thank you.
The Westerners.
Thank you, guys.
Oh.
We're done for the night.
Recreation Commission, they're presenting next week, but they wanted me to.